Today, we have received a generous donation from our apps in support of our frontliners, giving us PPEs and snacks for all of our frontliners working the COVID-19 response.
We are donating 26,000 surgical masks and 5,000 gloves, also 100 bottles of hand sanitizer and 1,500 packages of snacks to the Emergency Operations Center and the Mayor's Office of L.A. BEP's Charities is the charitable arm of a social spiritual organization. We have many community-based events such as health initiatives, environmental initiatives, education initiatives, and so we're really there for the community in all aspects.
The assistance we're getting from the private sector is very moving, is very helpful. The PPEs we're getting, they're extremely valuable. So we have N95 masks, people order clothing, they order food, they order all kinds of things, honestly, and there's a place for each one of these items. Keep in mind, 80% of the resources, they're in the private sector, right? So we need this hand-holding, we need this assistance. It will also help us morally. It's really refreshing to see how people respect what we do, they realize what we do, and they help.
I'm currently a senior at UCLA, and when I heard my graduation wasn't going to happen and, you know, that senior experience was not there, I felt like I wanted to give back to the community and give back to L.A., those living and breathing city that has hosted me for four years.
So these items really make them want to continue to move on. It brings them joy, and it's that benefit that they never expected, but they say thank you.
International Firefighters Day was this week. It was just the occasion that Frontliner Foods was looking for, to honor and provide meals for our vital first responders.
Today, the Los Angeles Fire Department would like to say they're very appreciative and grateful for the kind and generous donation from the frontline foods people for donating lunches today for 56 fire stations to the Los Angeles City Fire Department today. Our mission was to help restaurants and help the hospitality business, and we figured out by doing that, we could raise money and feed the frontline workers, and the frontline workers being doctors and nurses and janitors and teachers and firefighters and police officers and whoever's helping us in this national and global pandemic.
It feels very, very great, you know? It feels good to have the community to back you and, you know, give you support just as it's in these difficult times right now.
Supporting other restaurants in Los Angeles here and helping them stay afloat by helping them do what they do best is preparing meals and bringing food for us. So again, thank you very much for Frontliner Foods and everything they're doing for us, and thank you.
Thank you.
Funding for more Angelino cards has arrived. LADWP will plant a tree with your donation, and there's more training for teaching online. All this up next on City Beat.
Snapchat co-founder Bobby Murphy and his wife have donated a generous $5 million to the Mayor's Fund for Los Angeles. The money will fund an additional 20,000 Angelino cards, the L.A. city debit cards used for assistance by families with low incomes. This will increase the number of cards for people affected financially by the pandemic to 60,000. Depending on household size, the cards are given in increments of $700, $1,100, or $1,500. City Plants, in partnership with the LADWP, is offering limited free fruit and shade trees through virtual adoptions. Given out on a first-come, first-served basis, the trees are a great way to grow a healthy future for you and the community while adhering to the safer-at-home orders. Visit cityplants.org and learn how you can be part of making L.A. more environmentally friendly. L.A. USD has announced the launch of an expanded effort to help educators become experts in online instructor training. With students learning from home, teachers are looking for the training that will help them become more proficient at engaging students and their families with online learning. Nearly all teachers are taking these steps.
Unite Here Local 11 and USC Hospitality are ramping up free meals for L.A.'s seniors. The collaboration is answering the call from Mayor Eric Garcetti to increase the number of meals getting to L.A.'s most vulnerable population.
Last week, Mayor Garcetti announced his partnership with the Hospitality Training Academy and Unite Here Local 11 to start this program called Serving Our Community.
So today, we're feeding seniors in a partnership with the city.
Really, really excited that we got to launch and kick things off here with our partners at USC today.
We're producing five different meals for two separate deliveries, so the seniors are getting 10 meals a week.
When all these things started, you know, I say, what can I do to help? It makes me feel very proud, you know?
We want to be a part of the community. It feels great to be part of the process to help the most vulnerable. It's really important for us to be able to help those that are in need. It's the right thing to do.
They have no family, they have no strength to go out, so they have to be safe at home.
As a union, we've always believed in the power of coming together when things get difficult, and so I believe this is one of those instances, right? Where we're coming together with our community, with our workers, with our employers, right? With the city to really say, we need to step up and someone needs to provide these services, and so it just makes me really proud.
So currently, we're doing 8,000 meals a week, and logistically, it's a challenge, but we make do.
We really hope that other cities and other counties look at L.A. and make it a model to follow.
At the beginning of the pandemic emergency, L.A. residents saw an inexplicable run on toilet paper. You remember that. These days, there is a scarcity of items that are actual necessities: face masks and hand sanitizer. But don't worry, because three businesses in Boyle Heights have banded together to hook you up for free. Take a look.
Today, we're giving back to the community that supported us for over 122 years by giving out 10,000 masks to the general public to help promote safety and health. We're an industrial distributor. We were founded in 1898 by my great-grandfather, and our original location was in downtown Los Angeles on Third and Main, and we moved over here in 1964 and been here ever since. We're doing it in partnership with Imprex Fabric, a local company that makes fabric-based masks, and Sukah Hill Distillery, which makes some of the hand sanitizer that we distribute to our customers.
I'm just helping out my team, you know, giving out the free masks for the community. It's a team effort from the guys shipping and receiving, you know, the guys on the back, our office as well, just promoting the mask and what we're doing today. A lot of people don't have money to go and buy the mask, or they don't know how to get them, because all the supplies are going to the hospitals, so actually, we're able to, you know, to do that for them, for our community, for free.
Get out the word that wearing a mask in public isn't a bad thing, it's a good thing. You know, it might not completely stop COVID, but it'll help slow it down and give our medical workers a little bit of an ease. But in general, we're trying to do a good thing for the community.
Volunteers at the West Valley YMCA did their best to restore some semblance of normality for their members. They celebrated the 30th Annual Healthy Kids' Day with a Goodie Bag Drive-Thru.
We've been hosting Healthy Kids' Day around the nation for over 25 years, and today it's a little bit different. Obviously, we're shut in, we're not doing the normal regimen of activities and fun healthy games, but we're still honoring Healthy Kids' Day. And so today, here at the West Valley YMCA, we're providing a healthy grab bag of items, recipes, games for kids, little items that they can take home and they can actually use and play with. We have some virtual content on our website held this morning. We also have 50 free L.A. Galaxy soccer jerseys. One of our partners, the L.A. Galaxy, the L.A. Kings, and the L.A. Clippers are mission partners of the YMCA.
For them to open up their doors and allow us to just drive by, get some special little treats, and just keep our energy and spirits up.
Here to pick up stuff that we can't really find in stores anymore because people are just trying to take all of it for themselves, they're trying to take more than they even need.
The YMCA has always represented family and community for us, even as adults growing up.
Six weeks ago, we had to close the doors of the YMCA. That's just not something that happened, that's ever happened. Certainly, in 30-plus years of my career, I never could have imagined this timeframe in this day, but, you know, we pivoted, we've looked at different services to help the community. The YMCA stays committed and is strong to our mission. Although we're not open, we will be open one day soon, and we'll go back to doing all the fantastic things we've been known for doing in our community across this nation, but we can't wait to see everybody again.
Thank you, YMCA!
We love you!
We love you!
Businesses of all types have adapted their equipment and materials and found ways to repurpose them in service of combating COVID-19. From food deliveries to online teaching to manufacturing much-needed personal protective gear, but for places like the North Hollywood Interfaith Food Pantry, the first order of business has always been providing a few extra groceries for anyone in need.
Our food pantry has been serving the community for 37 years.
It began with a group of five women from five different contributions. The ideal, the hope, was that we could eliminate hunger here in the East San Fernando Valley.
Basically, whether it's through the economic recession, or it's going through an earthquake in 1994, or it's going through the homeless crisis, or it's going through a global pandemic, we are here to serve and bridge the gap where social services doesn't meet the streets.
We continue to serve during COVID.
I set up the operation like a drive-thru.
We didn't have drive-thru before.
The clients are able to get their food without interacting with the volunteers.
Simply, you pop the trunk, and we'll come around, or put it in the backseat.
All of our employees are washing hands, wearing masks, wearing gloves.
I have a son and a family just like the people that might be in fear of coming here, so my safety is important to me as their safety is to them.
We're serving the community twice a week, Mondays and Fridays.
Half of the food that comes out of this place basically comes from the neighborhoods and the model that we set up, but what's different about the pandemic and why it's more difficult is because the supply is gone now. It was a symbiotic relationship between the neighborhood and the general business locally, but all of that has flattened.
You can donate via our website, nhifp.org.
We're here, we've been here for 37 years, we've never turned anybody away.
Thank you to our awesome new group of volunteers that are enabling us to be the little pantry that can.
Please volunteer. It's a gift that these people are giving us, our clients. We are not giving to them, they are giving to us. They're sharing their lives with us.
Well, it's that time of year where L.A. City plans its budget for fiscal 2021, but there is no such thing as business as usual these days. Fortunately, I'm joined by Councilman Paul Corian, who is the chair of the Finance and Budget Committee, and he can walk us through how things are going to work this year.
In a city of our size, obviously, the budget is an exceptionally complex beast. The biggest revenue sources that the city has are property tax, sales tax, our business tax, and the temporary occupancy tax that comes from hotel stays.
Well, what a difference a year makes. Last year, the city basically celebrated eliminating any kind of structural deficits. It was in a really good, solid fiscal position, great reserve fund, and this is a different realm right now. So what are some of the key changes?
In this unprecedented environment that the country, the world, is in because of COVID-19, there's tremendous unpredictability about this budget. I've been budget chair now for eight years, and even when we were still in the Great Recession, there has never been a time like this where our revenues are so unpredictable, our expenses are so unpredictable, what support we may get or not get from the federal government in terms of stimulus and other things, completely unpredictable. And we usually have a very precise method of predicting revenues based on historical experience.
Sure.
We can just shred all that historical experience and throw it out the window right now because we're in uncharted territories. So the mayor's budget proposal is appropriately extremely conservative. He's projecting revenue growth of less than 2%, whereas in a normal, in recent years, we've been projecting over 5% annual growth, and that makes a great deal of difference in our budget because, as I mentioned, most of our revenue sources are economically sensitive.
Sure.
When there's economic growth, we get a lot more sales tax, property tax goes up, the businesses have more gross receipts, there's more gross receipts tax, people are traveling, so we get our hotel tax, people are building things, so they're paying permit fees. All of those things happen when there's a vibrant economy. When there's not a vibrant economy, and when we're facing the economic catastrophe that the world is facing right now, all of those revenue sources decline dramatically. If there's any good news in the budget this year, it's that in the time that I've been budget chair for the last eight years, we have methodically built up the largest reserve fund in the history of the city of Los Angeles. We started the Budget Stabilization Fund under my chairmanship, first time we've ever had one. So those two things taken together give us the ability to ride out downturns in the economy.
Councilman Corian, thank you for all you do, and I wish you a world of luck, and I will stay optimistic with you.
Thank you very much.
Take in a theater performance via podcast. See how a local museum ups its online game, or watch a design festival that makes its virtual debut. All this up next on Virtual Things to Do. L.A. Theater Works has a plethora of podcasts waiting for you. LATW's audio plays bring you comedies, dramas, classics, and contemporary works, all with top-name writers and performers. This includes the Relativity Series of science-themed plays, with lead funding provided by the Alfred P. Sloan Foundation, bridging science and the arts in the modern world. Be sure to check out the great audio entertainment available from L.A. Theater Works. Visit latw.org/podcasts. The Los Angeles Municipal Art Gallery wants you to stay connected, feel joy, and experience wonder through their new website, la mag at home. As part of this new virtual programming, La Mag is creating new content that will be available at lamag.org and across all of their social media platforms. Content includes digital programs with artists from past exhibitions, art-making activities, a series dedicated to La Mag's extensive education archives, artist resources, and more. Check out the L.A. Municipal Art Gallery's new online offerings at lamag.org. Virtual Design Festival is the world's first online design festival. This virtual extravaganza features a rolling schedule of interviews, movies, product launches, live streams, and collaborations. Over 35 architects and designers from around the world were invited to send self-recorded video messages to share with fellow designers and the world. This collection of videos was edited to a soundtrack by Los Angeles songwriter and musician, B.D. Wolf. The Virtual Design Festival is running from the 15th of April to the 30th of June. Visit dizine.com/vdf. And that's a look at some virtual things to do. Here at Channel 35, we stay committed to bringing you the best information possible during the COVID-19 outbreak. Remember that you can sign up with NotifyLA to receive emergency alerts. To sign up, just text your zip code to 888-777. You can also find reliable information about the resources available from the city of Los Angeles at these websites: publichealth.lacounty.gov, coronavirus.lacity.org, or at That's it for this edition. I'm Maria Hall Brown. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. See you next time for more L.A. This Week.
Okay, without objection. Next.
And a council member needs to move that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. O'Farrell moves and Ms. Corretts second.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Corretts moves and Ms. Rodriguez seconds.
Madam President, would council like all items to go forth with today?
Yes, without objection.
And then additionally, Madam President, there has been a request to continue Items 1A through J to August 11, 2020.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. What's next?
Items 1 through 3 are items noted for public hearing. Items 4 through 9 are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 10 through 25 are items for which public hearings have not been held. On the continuation agenda, Item 26 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. Additionally, for Item 16, a community impact statement has been submitted by the Agorak Neighborhood Council. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so those, without objection, those items are now before us. Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and run through the, um, through the roll call. Members, if you have any items that you wish to call special, you can state so at that time, as well as any amending motions, you should also say your amending motion when the clerk calls your name. Go ahead.
Mr. Blumenfield.
I'd like to call Item 22 special.
And is that for an amendment or discussion?
Just, just for some comment.
Thank you. Mr. Bonin.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Thank you. Buscaino.
Questions on 14. Can you please hold 14 on the table?
Sidio. Mr. Sidio, any items special? Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much.
Oh, Weezer.
Thank you.
Corretts.
No specials, thank you.
Corcoran.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to call Item 20 special for purposes of amendment. There's a written amendment that's been submitted for that.
And is there a second on that?
Second.
Thank you. And for the record, is, do you, can the amendment be verbalized?
No, it's a written amendment. It's already been submitted, seconded by Mr. O'Farrell.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
I, I think it would be useful if somebody read out the moving clause on the amendments so the public knows what it is before we take public comment.
Mr. Lee.
No specials.
Thank you. Martinez.
None for me, thank you.
O'Farrell. Any specials, Mr. O'Farrell?
Nope, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Price.
No specials.
Rodriguez.
Thank you. Item 17 for purposes of an amendment. The amending motion reads, "I move that the Office of Finance, in addition to the Department of Water and Power, be instructed to report back on this matter."
Thank you. And a second for that?
Second. Buscaino.
Thank you. Mr. Rue, any specials?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to first continue Item Number 2 to July 3, 2020. And I'd like to hold 23 for some comments. And I have Items Number 14 and 16 amendments. Item 14 is, first, I want to thank the city attorney for, um, for all of their input and all of their suggestions and amendments that they crafted. And, um, the draft, and this is to ensure the draft ordinance is accordance with the state law, I'd like to read the following amendment, amending motion into the record. "I move to amend Item 14 on today's council agenda relative to prohibiting the sale, disposal, donation, or confiscation of personal belongings in rented storage units. If an individual's storage lease goes into default resulting from the effects of the coronavirus, coronavirus emergency," to read, "I therefore move that city council request the city attorney to prepare and present a draft ordinance that allows the occupant of storage space in a self-storage facility to defer the payment of rent during the declared local emergency period by giving written notice to the owner of the facility within seven days of when rent is due, explaining that the occupant is unable to pay rent due to circumstances related to the COVID-19 pandemic. The occupants shall have three months following the expiration of the local emergency period to repay the deferred rent, and no late fee shall be imposed. The owner shall not terminate the occupant's use of the storage space if the occupant has followed the requirements of the ordinance." Also, Item Number 16, I'd like to have an amendment as well. "I move to amend Item 16, Recommendation 1 on today's council agenda relative to developing a restaurant relief program," to read, "1, instruct the Department of Aging with the assistance of the Chief CLA and the CAO to develop a restaurant relief program that would allow local independent restaurants to temporarily contract with the city to provide meals to residents experiencing homelessness located at emergency shelters, seniors who were previously receiving congregate meals at city dining centers, end-or-home delivered meals, students who receive meals or supplemental nutrition as part of a city-sponsored after-school program, the city's first responders, and city employees that are temporarily serving as disaster service worker capacity amongst others, and transmit the proposed program for city consideration. And add a recommendation to Number 3, to instruct the Department of Building and Safety with the assistance of the Planning Department, Chief CLA, to develop a temporary, no-fee administrative approval process for outdoor, sidewalk, and parking lot dining that could be granted once restaurant dining resumes, in order to provide for appropriate onsite social distancing and report back to council for review and approval of the proposed program." Thank you.
A second, both items. Thank you.
Mr. Rue, on Item 2, you want to continue it to July? Did you say July 1st?
July 3rd.
July 3rd, thank you. Okay, let's move on, Madam Clerk.
And Mr. Wesson, any items special?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Sidio, back to you.
Yes, I'd like to, uh, call special for 25 for purposes of amendment.
Are you prepared to read your amendment?
Sure, I can. Give me one brief second. One brief second, Madam Chair. Yes, so, as you know, we've been engaged in this discussion about renters, renters' rights, about, uh, what do we do with small mom and pops and mortgages? And there are limits to what the city can do. We've talked about that periodically. And we have continued to suggest and that there is legislation in Washington that we should be working on and focused on, that that's where much of the relief comes. So I'd like to amend Item 25 so that we include the Emergency Rental Assistance and Rental Market Stabilization Act of 2020. It was just updated. It's a bill that would establish an emergency rental assistance program, would provide $100 billion to help families and individuals pay their rent, utility bills, and remain stably housed. It will help property owners of all sizes to cover costs, including costs of necessary maintenance to ensure residents' health and safety and help the economic recovery program for those who are being adversely impacted by the COVID-19 emergency.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, all of you. And let's commend our congressperson, Congressman Jimmy Gomez, for his leadership on this. He sent this to me last night. It's an excellent program. It'll be administered through existing programs. They want to get money as soon as it's passed, within seven days.
Green passed.
It's a very real way to address real problems now.
Says Zoom now.
Okay, Mr. Sidio, can you please send your amendment to the clerk?
We are working on it. Yes, we will do it as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Corretts?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I also have a couple of verbal motions, if this is the right time for it.
No, verbal motions are introduced towards the end of the meeting, sir. Are you calling any of the items on the agenda special? Do you wish to introduce an amending motion to any of the items on the agenda today?
No.
Okay. So we'll come back to you for our verbal motions towards the end of the meeting. Members, are there any other specials or amending motions on today's agenda? Okay, see, none, let's move on. Madam Clerk, let's move on to the public comment. Go ahead and please read the call-in information that was provided on today's agenda.
Yes, Madam President. And as indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-900-6833 and use meeting ID number 459-499-150 and then press pound, then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Let me repeat, call 669-900-6833 and use meeting ID number 459-499-150 and then press pound, then press pound again when prompted for participant ID.
Excellent. I'm happy you got our motion.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you.
Want to explain our speaking rules to members of the public that are calling in to speak on today's agenda, please?
Thank you, Madam President. To members of the public calling in, when it is your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have one minute per item to speak, up to three minutes total, and one minute for general public comment if you wish. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not speaking on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you're on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the president. If you do not immediately get clearly on topic, or again stray off topic, the president will cut you off and you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we will move to the next speaker. We will take 60 minutes total of public comment. Finally, for members of the public calling in to speak, as soon as you hear someone address you, you are live in the council meeting. If you were also listening to the council meeting on your computer, Channel 35, or other devices, please turn down the volume on those devices immediately. There's a several-second delay between the live meeting and the broadcast on those devices. Once you're live in the meeting, it will cause confusion if you continue to listen on your other devices. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Just go ahead and start with our first caller.
And excuse me, Madam President. Before the first caller, I have the amending motion for Item 20. This was introduced by Mr. Corcoran, seconded by Mr. O'Farrell. This is regarding CD2 Emergency Grant Program, and it's to amend the recommendations to adopt the following in lieu of Recommendation Number 2 from the motion. "Approve the reallocation of $200,000 in CD2 arts development fees from the arts project commitments and associated findings identified in the fiscal year 2019/20 ADF Expenditure Plan and Fee Status Report to a new Council District 2 project topology entitled CD2 COVID-19 Emergency Response Program as detailed in the attachment to the motion."
Okay, let's go ahead and start with our first caller.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Max Nagler. And I would like to speak on Item 14, Council File 20-0472.
Do you have one minute? I need you to speak a little louder, please. We can't hear you.
I'm, I'm sorry?
We cannot hear you, sir. I need you to speak a little louder.
Okay, sorry. My name is Max Nagler, and I have called in to support Item 14, Council File 20-0472. Is that better?
It's better. Go ahead, you can begin now. You have one minute.
I have worked in the entertainment industry since college, and I have recently lost my job due to COVID-19 pandemic. Over the past several months, it has become increasingly harder for me to continue to make rent payments on my storage unit due to loss of income. Last month alone, I paid over $800, which is more than 50% of my stimulus check, in late payments and fees to my storage provider in fear that my unit will be auctioned off, which left me with less money to pay necessities such as food, rent, and household items. I hope this can be changed to give people the chance to prioritize essential needs without having the fear of losing our belongings during a crisis. Thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Item, public comment.
Do you want to speak only under general public comment, or what item do you want to speak on?
On item on the lanes. Is this you, fat mommy?
Item number one, go ahead.
Attention, immigration is pinchy putos. Estoy fregando de los chingados de numero uno que no contestan nada por pendejos. Translation, translation. Item one on the agenda is unconstitutional. It reflects the bad immoral ideas of Los Angeles. Eric Garcetti, fuck you, 42 U.S.C., 1983. On behalf of public interest and safety, fat mommy, go eat cake and shut the fuck up, bitch.
All right, you're off-topic, Speaker.
Yeah, get him off the line. He's off-topic.
You're off-topic.
Jackass.
Thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
I'd like to speak on agenda item number 23 and 24.
Okay, you have two minutes to speak on both items. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is Paul Seo, and I'm calling on behalf of the Korean American Democratic Committee. I just wanted to make a statement in support of those two agenda items. For over 20 years, the Korean American Democratic Committee has persevered for the political empowerment of the Korean American community through advocacy, education, and civic participation in spirit of Democratic Party principles. KABC wholeheartedly supports the Los Angeles City Resolution to conclude in the city's 2019-2020 federal legislative programs, or House Resolution 908, and Senate Resolutions coming from Senators Harris, Duckworth, and Hirono, or any similar legislation or administrative action which would condemn all forms of anti-Asian sentiment as related to COVID-19. Now, the surge in hate crimes against Asian Americans during the COVID-19 pandemic is a sad reality and unfortunate repeat in history when looking back on how ethnic groups are violently scapegoated for greater issues our society is facing. Now, we hope the city of Los Angeles is one of the most diverse cities in the nation, and we must enact policies that are inclusive to all residents while promoting individual rights. Our hope is that the city council takes immediate action by voting in support and solidarity of the resolutions that are more than political statements but a call to action for all Angelino to condemn all forms of racism and hate. Thank you very much.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Mi nombre es Armando Alcantara, y quiero hablar sobre el artículo número uno de la Dakota al 943 del Este.
You have one minute. Comience, por favor.
Oh, mi caso es de que un señor que vive allí no lo podía sacar, y yo tuve que gastar mucho dinero, caí al hospital, llevé a mi esposa al hospital. Este, estamos mal, y yo lo que quiero es llegar a una regla que si me pueden hacer una rebaja sobre el bill que me están corriendo porque yo he pagado mucho dinero de ese caso. Aparte, ahorita en el Alcántara, yo tengo el coronavirus. Yo estoy enfermo. Y yo no tengo dinero para estarle pagando, que mi esposa también, y yo me hago la de estrés de que no podemos sacar a esa persona de ahí. Tuve que pagar una burra para sacarlo también de ahí. Y ya les pagué muchos miles al inspector o a la ciudad por tener eso ahí.
To the city, to the inspector, to have that there.
Y yo lo único que quiero es pagarles para que me den una rebaja y un plan de pago.
Un momentito. Gracias, señor. ¿Cuál es la dirección?
What is your address? Thank you, sir.
La Dakota 943.
943 Dakota East.
La zona postal es 99023.
Okay, 943 South Dakota Street?
Sí.
Yes.
Gracias.
Muchísimas gracias. Thank you so much.
Okay, item 1A has been continued till August 11th.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Por de nada. Gracias, señor.
Until August 11th. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker?
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Stuart Waldman from VICA. I'm calling to speak on item 3, 7, 10, 11, 14, 16, and general comment.
Good morning, Mr. Waldman. Go ahead. You have three minutes for all your items, one minute for general public comment.
Good morning. Thank you. In regards to item number three, there's a Vallarta that would be built at the old Toys R Us site in Van Nuys. I live near there. I understand you're asking for an alcohol permit. There's a liquor store across the street and right next to them. I think that might be overkill for the neighborhood, so I'm expressing concern. On item number seven, regarding sidewalks and alternative materials, I think that's a great opportunity to see how we can do things quicker and cheaper, and I think now's the time to do it, when we have the ability and people who need to work. On items 10 and 11, regarding fees and appeals and extension of time, we are fully supportive of that. As you know, there are some companies that can't move forward with their projects, and we'd hate for them to lose their opportunity to build housing and other facilities. In regards to item 14, on self-storage, we are deeply concerned that people can take advantage of this situation, that, you know, the current situation and just not pay their bills. It is a burden that you're asking small business owners to handle, to not be able to get rid of people who are not paying. And on item 16, regarding restaurant relief, we think it's a great measure that can help tons of businesses that are just trying to survive. It can help bring back jobs, and we support that. In terms of general comment, I want to thank the council for all their hard work, and the city. You know, it is important that we move forward and do everything we can to bring jobs back to the city and help employers move forward to open up their businesses when safe and as important, people wear masks, protect their employees, and get the economy going as soon as we can. So I want to thank everyone, and again, I want to thank all the staffs who are working hard.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Jenny Garcia, and I am calling in regards to item number 1E, 190160S162. I'm the property owner of 10446 North El Dorado Avenue.
Okay, good morning. You have one minute to just to go ahead and speak on this item?
Okay, so I've been leasing this property to the same tenants as of 2013 through March 7th of 2020, and my past tenants did not provide me with any notices from the Department of Building and Safety during their tenancy. I came across a notice of hearing that was posted on my property on March 16th when I was cleaning out the property to turn over to my new tenant. And in addition, in your notice of hearing dated February 21st, it references Exhibits A and D, which were not included in the notice of hearing that I found on my property. With that being said, I'd like to request that any related costs due to any code violations, late charges, and collection charges, and noncompliance fees be waived, as well as any pending liens against my property. I kindly ask that you provide me the alleged code violations, which I was never made aware of or put on notice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Items number 1, 10, 14, 17, 24, and public comment.
Do you have three minutes for your items and one minute for general public comment? Go ahead.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez, first of all, I would like to implore you, this is Lynn Moses, I would like to implore you to be a little more professional, please. I don't think it's too much to ask to start these meetings on time. The public is paying for your salaries.
Speaker, would you please get on topic, Mr. Speaker?
That comment very briefly. Items number one, of course, I am against all these liens that are consistent with the city and that they be placed just on an emergency basis, that they be reviewed and people's properties not be impacted in this time of crisis. Item number 10, I'm in favor of. Caution should be taken on item number 14, as one of the other speakers spoke about, that you're not impacting, greatly impacting with some of these motions, the businesses. Of course, people need a lot of relief, but please, take in consideration the businesses as well, that you don't create more problems. Item number 17, I agree with LADWP on the low-income assistance. Item number 24, here we go, Herb Wesson and Price, supporting every group, every race, everybody on the planet except their own people. Of course, Asians should not be discriminated against, but we never hear these so-called black officials talking about the ongoing police brutality, no resolutions against the murders that are taking place in Georgia, et cetera. I believe a moratorium should be, in fact, what they do, they take money out of our community. These people are in charge of gentrifying our community, not supporting the black community. Herb Wesson is king of homelessness and his criminal acts. Now he wants to transfer his homeless-generating skills to the city, to the LA County Board of Supervisors.
Speaker, I think you've gone off-topic. Do you want to go to general public comment?
My public comment? Can I go to my public comment now, please?
Sure. Go ahead, sir.
All right, thank you, Ms. Martinez. I believe there should be a moratorium and a second look at all of these boondoggle programs, such as Marquise Dawson's Destination Crenshaw, that's all he ever does, that's all he ever talks about. Public, this is a $300 million project, tens of millions of dollars of city funds, public funds, is going into this so-called art project, which is actually a gentrification project, going to create more homelessness in the black community. These projects, such as these, when people don't have jobs, you're putting tens of millions of dollars in these crappy projects in which these council people do nothing but do lap dances and get campaign contributions from. These projects should all be put on hold. As you're sitting out there in the public, have no money, no job, they're spending tens of millions of dollars.
Thank you, sir.
Nothing to improve the city.
Next speaker?
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
This is Jefferson Kemper with the American Federation of Musicians Local 47, speaking on item 21 and general comment.
Okay, you have one minute for your item and one minute for general public comment. You may begin.
Yeah, this is Jefferson Kemper, representing the American Federation of Musicians Local 47, speaking on item 21. We want to commend Councilmember Rue for, you know, taking the funds from his district for arts development projects and creating, helping to create emergency relief for artists and arts organizations. Right now, musicians and other performers and other artists are at nearly 100% unemployment, and that's exactly what we need in the crisis. I want to just share some of the principles that we hope that the council will hold and we're seeing in item 21, and that we hope to see continue, in terms of our city's response to the COVID crisis as it relates to arts programming and arts in the city. Number one, I think that investment in the arts and cultural sector must stay, you know, stay there. We don't want to see any of the funding sources that typically go to the Department of Cultural Affairs be repurposed for...
Thank you, sir. You want to move on to your general public comment? You have one additional minute.
Sure. So where funding can be used to continue arts programming, we want to support that. If things need to be converted to online presentation or that type of thing, as the Department of Cultural Affairs has proposed, we think that's the right move. And then where programming and funding can't be used as it had originally been intended and it can't be converted, direct payments to artists, direct relief to arts organizations is key. And through all these things, we want to make sure that we're holding organizations accountable to pay their artists, to pay performers, and to pay those folks a living wage. So, that's it, and thanks to the council.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, it's Eric Previn calling. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Previn. What items you want to speak on?
I'm going to speak on, for the sake of clarity, all the items and general public comment.
Okay, three minutes and one minute for general.
So the first one, I'm going to mute this in one second as well, if I had to walk over. Okay, so the first one I'd like to talk about is item number 20, which seemed like a good idea. Councilmember Kerkorian was earmarking several hundred thousand dollars to be distributed to arts organizations that have some kind of recorded meetings or sessions. Sounded good, but then it was amended, and it sounded like 200,000 of that money was going to be deployed for COVID emergency services. So I just, you know, rather than reading it and making it clear, we don't really know what that means. So that one remains unclear, and I don't understand why we can't post the clarity before we move forward with those things. Maybe he could clarify that, if he's inclined. I'm all for equal prize money for gender sports competitions personally. I think it's a great area. But I think when you make it a law, it's kind of creepy, because people don't, you know, I could think of situations where a woman's prize money would be higher than for a man. I mean, it's just an ad area to be inserting ourselves, I find. I sort of agree with Stuart Waldman that the idea of, although I do like Vallarta, a liquor operation over on Sherman Way in CT6, I mean, council member, that's one of the worst traffic sections ever, so to have excess liquor is not a great area. Liens at this time, several speakers have brought it up, you know, it's very awkward to be pressing people for money for things like leaving their trash askew or not cleaning up their yard or doing something they're not, it's just a weird time to be going after that, and it's immoral, frankly. And then I would say that, you know, giving $500 to folks who give birth to a child from the CARES money is a nice idea, because what are they going to do and how are they going to earn money? But I just want to echo once again that, you know, the public funds are at an all-time tight place. We just heard the county board of supervisors report that $1.3 billion shortfall at the county. So everybody is belt-tightening like crazy, so I think it's a good time to, you know, ease off of expansive ideas and think about ways that can really be focused and effective. This is, you know, this is one, but we don't know how many people who are having children at this time, you know, everybody could use $500. And do I have time for a general public comment? Is that what we're doing?
Yes, Mr. Previn, go ahead. Yes, Mr. Previn, go ahead. You've got one minute left. Go ahead.
Okay. So for the general public comment, I want to take a moment to thank the County Board of Supervisors, who just had a, a budget hearing for taking some comment, but they had two items on the agenda, one of which was a public hearing, and they only took a minute comment, which falls far short, and they only took comments from up to 15 minutes of folks, which is, I would describe it as a robust slap across the public face. It makes no sense. And I was very interested in Saachi Imai, who, as you know, anchored her post and then is stuck in the COVID nightmare, so hasn't left yet. Her report, I wanted to give a comment on her report, but it was completely impossible because you had to, you know, sort of speak in a vacuum, which was, you know, again, appreciated that they're doing something, but they ought to consider that great input from the public has been arising from these meetings and from these calls, and to shut it down arbitrarily makes no sense. You have tried to get your act together, and I admire that. I still obviously do not like the fact that amendments keep occurring that are actually hard to follow, and I wonder why John Lee in CB12 is-
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Thank you, sir.
You know, but kind of a, costs money.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Rob Klon, I'd like to speak on items twenty-three, twenty-four, and general public comment.
About two minutes for your items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Yeah, yesterday, Councilmember Wesson tweeted about today's vote on items twenty-three and twenty-four and the rise of anti-Asian-American hate crimes and racism since COVID began, saying, quote, "We all have a part to play in standing up against prejudice and racism", unquote. And thanks to his leadership, our city finally joined other major jurisdictions by creating Civil Human Rights Department last year, but our laws are only as good as they are enforceable. This year's department, this year, the department received an abysmal budget allocation. Capri Matics has asked for an additional $196,000 to allow the department to properly scale up and begin doing its work, and that request, remind you, is less than each of your annual salaries. While the Budget and Finance Committee did not discuss this department on Monday, I hope that our former council president will ensure that the department has the resources it needs, so we're not merely paying lip service to standing up against prejudice and racism. It was encouraging to see a few of our Budget and Finance Committee members offer critiques of LAPD's budget on Monday. I hope that this council will uphold our city charter's declaration that drop is intended to be cost neutral and in the program. For the price of one single drop payout, we could fully fund the Civil Human Rights Department, the Ethics Commission, the Climate Emergency Mobilization Department, and probably have a little bit more left over. That's just one single payout comparable to the $1.27 million Chief Moore collected shortly before lobbying for the position. So the program is illustrated as a farce by our former chief announcing that he's going to retire and then actually not, and taking on a 10-year position. As it stands, this program is a massive intergenerational theft born out of political cowardice. I fully respect the fiscal caution hanging over our budget. We are in a deep hole with an unknown size, but drop has, has and will continue to undermine any attempts to balance our budget without sacrificing other essential-
Thank you, Rob. You want to move on to your general public comment now?
No, it's all good. I, that was everything I had, so I'll, I'll spare you some time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Members, that concludes public comment for today. Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote on some items.
I believe council may vote at this time on items two through thirteen, fifteen-
On item number two has been continued by Mr. -
Correct.
-Ryu until July-
To July 3rd.
July 3rd, yeah.
So three through thirteen, fifteen, eighteen through nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-four, and twenty-six.
Mr. Sedir, did you want to speak?
I amend it for twenty-five.
No, we're voting on items that have not been called special and have not been amended, so, or you want to withdraw your amendment, sir?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So let's add twenty-five to that list of items we can vote on. Okay, go ahead and open the room.
Thank you, Madam President, and for the record, the amendment on item twenty-five was withdrawn. And then on these items, and again, these are three through thirteen, fifteen, eighteen and nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. Mr. Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sedil.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Weezer.
Yes.
Koretz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Ryu.
Aye.
And Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Fifteen ayes, these items are adopted.
Okay, let's take a 15-minute break to make sure we've gotten all of our amending motions in, so can we turn and vote on those? Thank you.
Mr. Blumenfield.
Mr. Blumenfield. Mr. Blumenfield. Mr. Bonin. Mr. Bonin. Hi, Tia. You guys okay? They're all muted. Okay. I'll begin the roll call again. Mr. Blumenfield.
Okay, it looks, it sounds like we're having some technical issues.
We can see them speaking.
Okay, Mr. Blumenfield, can you hear us? But we can't hear him. Mr. Blumenfield, thumbs up, can you hear us? He can hear us, but we can't hear him.
I can hear him.
There you are. Okay, let's start again.
Thank you. Mr. Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, present.
Bonin.
Bonin, present.
Buscaino.
Here.
Sidiyo.
Present.
Harris Dawson.
Harris Dawson.
Weezer.
Here.
Coretz.
Here.
Kirkorian.
Here.
Lee.
Present.
Martinez.
Here.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rue.
Present.
And Wesson.
Wesson, here.
Fifteen members and a quorum. Madam President.
Okay, members, let's move on to item fourteen. Called special by Mr. Buscaino and amended by Mr. Rue. Mr. Buscaino? Mr. Buscaino, are you there?
Sorry, Madam President, I have a slight delay here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Item fourteen, sir.
Wonderful. Thank you, Madam President. Members, I just want to add a couple of questions on item fourteen. Wondering if the city attorney is available?
So, I believe Dave Michelson and/or Soraya Kelly are on the line. Can we bring them up?
Mr. Michelson, are you on the line?
Soraya Kelly.
Mr. Buscaino, we're letting him into the meeting. Hold off for just a second.
Sure. Thank you, Madam President.
I see, I see Dave. He's on the line.
So, it looks like Mr. Michelson and Soraya Kelly?
Yes. I think Mr. Michelson, I know, is in the meeting, so let's unmute him and...
It's Dave Michelson. I'm here.
Excellent.
Fantastic, Mr. Michelson. Thank you so much. I just had a question on state law, on how state law regulates self-service storage facilities. Certainly. Dave Michelson with the Office of the City Attorney. Also with me today is one of my colleagues, Deputy City Attorney Soraya Kelly with our Public Safety Division. She's been assisting me in looking at this motion. We have considered state law. We've also carefully reviewed the letters that are in the council file, including the ones that came in in the last twelve hours. Some of those letters talk about legal concerns, and so we've taken those concerns seriously. There are some legal risks clearly associated with the council pursuing this, this policy, but if the council is inclined as a body to pursue this policy with the changes that the maker of the motion, Councilmember Rue, has, has made, we believe an ordinance would be legally defensible. There is state law, to answer your question very specifically, Councilmember, there is state law in the Business and Professions Code that specifically addresses self-storage facilities, and the law in particular focuses on the process an owner of the facility must go through in order to remove and dispose of the belongings or possessions of the individual who was renting the space if rent is no longer being paid. The ordinance that we would present that's being requested by this motion would not seek to intrude into that process, the lien process, the written notice process. This ordinance that you all would consider, if, again, from a policy perspective, your council wants to pursue this, we would not draft the ordinance to intrude into that area of the state law. And currently, the city is involved, is the city involved in regulating storage locker business? Not directly, I believe, no. Not directly. So, and I also want to make sure as we move forward that we protect the health and safety and that the health and safety preserved in this ordinance. If there's illegal activity happening in a storage unit, or if the unit's being used for illegal reasons, I know, for one, we've, we've had to confiscate a lot of illegal fireworks in self-storage units here in the Harbor area, or even if the items in the unit are creating a threat to public health, I want to ensure that the, as a storage locker companies have the power to remove these tenants. Would that be the case as we move forward? It will be. Nothing in this ordinance would intrude or impact a self-storage facility's owner's ability or law enforcement's ability to, to, to react to those kinds of situations. Just to clarify, Dave, if you can, how, how will the ordinance address renters who are already involved in the lien process for reasons unrelated to COVID-19? It would not address that. The way we would draft the ordinance, and I think the direction from, from council is indicated, the motion is really focused on those individuals who are renting space in one of these facilities who are struggling because of a COVID-19 reason to make that, that payment. And so during the period of the local emergency, there would be relief for those individuals struggling because of a COVID-19 reason, and, and that's the direction that the ordinance would take, which I think follows the motion. The current process for evicting a, a storage locker tenant is, is long and tedious from what I'm gathering. A lien is, is put on the person's belongings several months after failure or decay, and the renters are always allowed the opportunity to complete a declaration of opposition. How does this ordinance help an already careful, crafted, slow process? So, again, the ordinance would steer clear of directly engaging in the actual process by which an owner can remove the belongings that are in one of these lockers and ultimately, through a lien sale, dispose of the belongings. What the ordinance would really speak to is sort of the upfront issue, the substantive issue of the individuals who's making that monthly payment unable to make that payment because of a COVID-19 reason would provide written notice to the owner of the facility indicating what that COVID-19 reason, financial reason is, and then that would allow the individual to defer that payment through the period of the local emergency, and because of that, the owner of the facility would not be legally in a position to actually terminate the contract, and if they're not able to terminate the contract, the owner clearly would not have the ability then to go through the lien process. So, it really speaks to the ordinance of the motion, the upfront issue of an individual unable to make payment because of COVID-19 during the emergency. Thank you for the clarification. No further questions. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Lee?
Mr. Michelson, is there a, is there a, is this a retroactive motion, or does it start the following month after that you present this ordinance to us? Was there something in the motion that actually states the timeline of when this would start?
So, that's a great question. I do not recall if the motion actually has language specific to a start time. I will tell you if it's the council's desire from a policy perspective to move on this today and to adopt this motion, we will very quickly in our office prepare and present the ordinance. I'm not sure if the maker of the motion would like to, and therefore the council would like to have an urgency clause, but if that is added into the motion today, we would include that urgency clause, as the council has done on a number of these ordinances the last few weeks, which would allow the ordinance to go into effect within a day or two after the mayor assigns the ordinance, assuming the mayor was inclined to sign the ordinance. In terms of a reach back, that's something we'll have to look into, and we would probably try to model what was done recently by council ordinance with respect to residential and commercial tenants.
Well, colleagues, I would hope that this would be something moving forward, you know, where we're talking about affecting businesses. I mean, it seems like we're picking and choosing certain businesses to help people. We're not, you know, asking restaurants or different other businesses to provide free items, and now we're choosing something like this. So, I ask that this, if it is crafted in any ways that it moves forward going from this point onwards and not that we retroactively enact this ordinance.
Any other speakers?
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item? Mr. Rue?
Uh, thank you, Madam President, and I thank my colleagues.
Thank you, Madam President, and I thank my colleagues. And I just want to clarify. I think in this time of pandemic, there are multitude of debts. And I think our council has been very progressive and been very forward-thinking in protecting all Angelenos, whether it's through rent, whether it's through water and power bills, whether it's a multitude of other things that we have control over. And I think this is one of those other items that we are seeking to help Angelenos when every month they're saddled with debt. They're saddled with rent, saddled with mortgage, they're saddled with the utilities, they're saddled with insurance payments, and the list goes on and on. I mean, I have one constituent in my district who is literally paying $800 a month to keep his unit and his stuff from going into, being repossessed and going into auction. So what we're trying to do here is trying to make sure that we provide some sort of debt relief in the power that we have to help all Angelenos. And yes, thank you for that clarification, Councilmember Lee. I would like an urgency clause if we could try to get this done as soon as possible. But I think the city attorney has, I really thank you guys for working not just on this motion but everything else because you have pretty much done everything on our urgency clause. So the soonest we can get this back, we would like, I would like to adopt it. But this is more, you know, this motion mirrors the eviction, existing eviction protections that we have for residents and commercial units. So this is within that scope, and we want to make sure that we work closely with the city attorney, and I really thank the city attorney for their analysis and their suggestion for this amendment. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Is there a second for Mr. Rue's urgency clause?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Rue. I just, you know, Mr. Lee, to your point, we are identifying areas where we have missed some very important issues, this being one of them. Unfortunately, during the economic recession, I know many folks, we had, we saw so many families who were impacted by foreclosures, having to downsize and consolidate their belongings and place them into storage, only to have, depending on what the circumstances were of their financial situation, having their items seized and sold. You know, right now, during this pandemic, families, as we all know, are going through tremendous struggles economically. And, you know, some of these items could be residual impacts and storage, items that they've had stored as a result, even going back to the recession. So many families, we know, have not still recovered. So thank you, Mr. Rue, for this and proud to support you on this important item.
Any other speakers on this item? Can you see and analyze, prepare to vote on item fourteen, as previously amended by Mr. Rue? Call the roll.
Mr. Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Aye. Sadio, aye.
Thank you. Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Weezer.
Yes.
Caretz.
Yes.
Kerkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
And Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Fifteen ayes. This item is adopted as amended.
Okay, members, let's move on to item twenty-two. Mr. Blumenfield?
Great, thank you. So colleagues, I'm urging you for an aye vote on this item, item twenty-two. It includes a resolution I wrote and also a resolution that Mr. Rue wrote. And basically, we're asking to call on Congress to boost the SNAP program, previously known as food stamps for millions of food insecure individuals struggling, especially because of COVID-19. Now, according to Congress, and Congress really at this point has taken no action to expand SNAP for those who are food insecure, and we know that SNAP is one of the most effective federal programs to mitigate the hardships for low-income families. We know it, and the CBO, Congressional Budget Office, has verified it, that the SNAP expenditures not only benefit food insecure families, but they're also one of the most efficient methods to support an economy during a recession. Every SNAP dollar spent in the local economy contributes to wages for grocery store workers and food producers, all of whom depend on this for their operations. In LA and across the county, food insecurity is one of the biggest issues impacting families during this pandemic. And given the rising unemployment rates and food bank data, there could be as many as 60 million people who don't know when or where their next meal is coming from. An extremely serious issue, and this is why why we need to call on Congress to boost the maximum benefit by 15%, double the minimum benefit to $30 a month, and allow EBT use on grocery delivery platforms benefiting local businesses. Look, we're doing a lot, all of us individually in our districts, supporting our food pantries and doing what we need to do for food insecurity. But this change to SNAP would dwarf everything we're doing in a substantial way. So it's just really important that we call on Congress to do that, and that's why I ask for your aye vote on this item. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to concur with my colleague, Councilmember Bob Blumenfield, as well as all of the co-authors and secundars of this motion, Harris Dawson, Councilmember Rodriguez, because this goes into a point where we, we, local governments can't do it alone during this pandemic. We seriously now need help from both our state and federal jurisdictions as well, and this is one of them. When it comes to SNAP, this is one of the most basic services. We've seen all throughout where food banks are running low on food, where all the food pantries and all the various food programs are really stretched to their limit. And this really helps in that endeavor. And, you know, growing up as a child, my family at one point, we were on food stamps as well. So I know how important it is, and that was even during pandemic time. And even before the pandemic hit, we were already, it was very expensive to live in Los Angeles. And every support that we could give our working families and our low-income families is an extra boost, especially during this time of pandemic. So I thank, I know our entire council is supportive of this, and I really thank all of our colleagues and all my co-authors and secundars for this resolution.
Can you see any other members on this item? Let's prepare to vote on item twenty-two. Please call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Turn it down, please.
Mr. Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Weezer.
Yes.
Caretz.
Aye.
Kerkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Yes.
And Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Fifteen ayes. This item is adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item twenty-three, called special by Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Madam President. And colleagues, you know, sorry about that. This month is Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, which I'll talk a little bit more about during announcements. But I did want to take this moment about this item and this issue of hate crimes. And I also know Councilmember Wesson also introduced another complimentary motion, which is advocating for the same thing here. And, you know, we, our council together has worked on hate crimes legislation, and we have had regular reports on hate crimes to the Public Safety Committee and to this council. And we passed legislation to make our city more proactive in preventing hate crimes, hate crimes within the city of LA. And last year, of course, we all, I launched a Hate Crimes Security Fund to give small grants to vulnerable institutions. And I did this because I saw a troubling rise in hate crimes against the Jewish community, the LGBT community, immigrants, and many other communities. And I never really thought that we'd again see an overwhelming resurgence of hate crimes against Asian Americans. But as we've seen across the United States, since this pandemic started, Asian Americans have been targeted. Asian Americans have been discriminated against, and even more worrisome, Asian Americans have been assaulted and injured. But perhaps worst of all, this discrimination and fear-mongering is repeated at the highest levels of government. This is despicable. It is shameful, and it is literally a gut punch to the millions of Asian Americans who bear no responsibility for this virus and should not be treated like they are a threat or a political token. Los Angeles is not immune to what's going on in this country, and in my district, just one example in Silver Lake, stop signs have been vandalized to read "Stop China." Therefore, you know, I hope that we could all stand against this type of hate crimes and discrimination before it gets even worse. And, you know, maybe it's a little naive of me to think something like this wouldn't happen, or maybe I was too, a little too hopeful or too optimistic. But this country has a long history of turning on its Asian-American communities in times of stress or fear. But I think Los Angeles, and I know Los Angeles can be better than that, which is why I ask for your support for this resolution and for the House resolution introduced by Representatives Congressmembers Grace Meng and the Senate resolution introduced by Senators Harris, Duckworth, and Hirono, condemning all anti-Asian hate crimes, hate in all forms. And I continue to urge the FBI and the State Department to issue, to take this issue of hate crime seriously and protect all of our nation's people. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Mr. Wesson?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President and members, and it was, you know, the appropriate thing to do to introduce this type of motion. Whenever we, as good people, witness hate, it is our responsibility to stand up and speak out against it. It is something that I have lived with every day of my life, and the only way to deal with this is for us, good people, to talk about it. It is not right to suggest that this current situation that we live in is a Chinese or Asian-related issue. This affects all of us, but issues like this illuminate the problem of racism, period. When a guy is jogging because he's black, that is hate, that is racism, and these are the things that we have to stop. I think it was just last week or yesterday, Mr. Caretz spoke on additional hate crimes towards the Jewish community. And I will never forget when we were visited, David and Paul, by our dear friend Rabbi Rubin, who told us that bad people are born into every generation. So it is the responsibility of us, the good people, to do everything that we can to make sure that we protect everyone. So whenever something like this happens, we need to stand up, speak out loud and clear, and this is an example of that. So I'm proud that we've already voted for item twenty-four. And I was going to say rise, but I sit to support item twenty-three. So I ask for an aye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Any other members? See, and let's prepare to vote on this item, item twenty-three. Please call the roll.
Mr. Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Weezer.
Yes.
Caretz.
Aye.
Kerkorian. Mr. Kerkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Yes.
And Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Fifteen ayes. This item is adopted.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move on to items sixteen, seventeen, and twenty as amended.
Mr. Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio. Mr. Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Weezer. Weezer.
Yes.
Thank you. Caretz.
Yes.
Kerkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Yes.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Fifteen ayes. These items are adopted as amended.
Okay, members, are there any members who wish to introduce verbal motions? Please raise your verbal hand. Your virtual hand, I apologize about that. Your virtual hand. Mr. Caretz. Mr. Caretz, we can't hear you.
Yeah, it didn't work. No, I think, I think I'm able to be heard, correct?
Yes, we can hear you now. Go ahead and introduce your verbal motion, sir.
Okay, my first verbal motion is regarding the Rental Assistance Subsidy Program. I moved that $50,000 from Council District Five General City Purposes Fund Number 100-56, Account Number 0705, CD5 Community Services, be transferred appropriated to the Housing and Community Investment Department COVID-19 Emergency Rental Assistance Subsidy Program Trust Fund, CF20-0401, to assist eligible renters in CD5. That further moved that H Sid, with the assistance of the city clerk, be authorized to prepare the necessary instructions to the controller, identify the appropriate fund and account numbers, make any corrections, clarifications, or revisions to the above instructions, including any corrections and changes of fund or account numbers to effectuate the intent of this motion, and said corrections, clarifications may be made orally, electronically, or any other means.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Caretz, you have a second verbal motion?
Yes, my second verbal motion is a commendatory resolution. I resolve that by the adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council hereby declares May 15, 2020 as Senior Fraud Awareness Day in the city of Los Angeles. And in addition, during the announcement portion at the end of council, I'd like to make a few remarks and have a couple colleagues join me in recognition of Senior Fraud Awareness Day. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Bonin. Members, are there any other verbal motions? Okay, Madam Clerk, you want to read into the record?
The first motion was introduced by Councilmember Rue to transfer and appropriate $10,000 from the council's portion of the Heritage Month Celebration and Special Events Line item in the General City Purposes Fund to the Council District Four portion of General City Purposes Fund to be used for Jewish Heritage Month. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
That will be Councilmember Blumenfield as a second?
Okay.
The next motion introduced is a resolution referred to the Rules, Elections, and Intergovernmental Relations Committee, introduced by Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez to include support in the 2019-2020 state legislative program for any legislation and/or administrative action that would expand medical reimbursements for over-the-counter products. Is there a second?
I second that.
Second.
Seconded by Council President Martinez. The next resolution was introduced by Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez and referred to the Rules, Elections, and Intergovernmental Relations Committee. It is to include support in the- It is to include support in the 2019-2020 federal legislative program for legislation and/or administrative action that reverses recent amendments to the guidelines of Title IX, which undermine existing protections for victims of sexual violence and compromise the safety of all students on school campuses. Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay.
Seconded by Council President Martinez. The final motion has been referred to the Housing Committee, introduced by Councilmember Harris Dawson, to instruct the Housing Department to develop a COVID-19 Anti-Displacement Fund to provide mortgage assistance to mom-and-pop owners of residential rental properties of 10 or fewer units, and to also instruct the CLA and the CAO to identify and prioritize funding, including but not limited to the Coronavirus Relief Fund and the COVID-19 Community Development Block Grant allocation, to implement a COVID-19 mom-and-pop mortgage assistance program. Is there a second?
Second.
And I believe that Mr. Wesson and I are co-presenters on that.
Second.
Co-presented by Councilmembers Bonin and Wesson, and seconded by Councilmember Sadio. That is all, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other verbal motions, members? Okay, seeing none, what's next, Madam Clerk?
Council has these motions for posting and referral. The motions will be posted on the city clerk website shortly after the meeting.
Posted and referred, members, are there any announcements?
I have one.
Can you just let me know by, by pressing your, your virtual hand so I can see that you want to speak? Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Madam President, and colleagues, along with Councilmember John Lee. I want to wish everybody a happy Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. This mu, this is a month celebrated across the United States, and this is especially important in Los Angeles, because Los Angeles, city and county, is the capital of Asian America. And there are more Asian Americans here than anywhere else in the United States, and Los Angeles is home to the largest Korean, Bangladeshi, Thai, Filipino, and Vietnamese populations outside of Asia. These diverse communities helped create one of the most vibrant cities on earth. And from the railroads, from building the railroads, to Yahoo.
I'm gonna take off.
To Yahoo. Asian Americans have been at the forefront of building our nation. Most years, we celebrate Asian American Heritage Month with, with our AAPI communities, with a big festival, but this year, it will look different. But the APAM celebration is perhaps more important than ever, because Asian Americans are at the forefront of this pandemic, working in hospitals, working in nonprofits, and serving their communities, serving all communities, whether it's group like, whether it's groups like the Korean American Federation, KYCC, Thai CDC, APCON, Asian Americans Advancing Justice, or, or any of the dozens of Asian American nonprofits in our city, or recently, East West Bank, who I want to highlight, who has donated $1 million to launch the Immigrant Neighbor Fund. Asian Americans from every corner of our city is stepping up. So I will be celebrating these heroes online and celebrating Asian Americans of Los Angeles all month long, and with the hashtag of #AAPIheroes, I hope you all join me. Asian Americans have a lot to be proud of. They have served in the medical field at higher rates, and they are saving lives every day. They are more likely to start a small business and create jobs, and today, we are working together to help those, keep those businesses afloat. Asian Americans innovate, create, and lead, and they make our city and our nation a better place to live. As a proud Asian American, I want to wish you all a very happy Asian Pacific American Heritage Month.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. And colleagues, I just wanted to let you all know, and for anyone watching, last week, we kicked off the Adulting 101 Series for high school students, and we had some great participation. Again, my thanks to the Campaign for College Opportunity and Partnership LA for helping to secure some really great folks to participate on the panel, answer questions for a number of students that have, are maybe even changing their outlook for what college might be right now. They might want to stay local, given the circumstances. So we've provided a lot of great information for folks. It's available livestream on my social media, on Facebook, but we also have a Zoom where everyone can register in advance. Again, this is part of a four-part series, and so last week was on college readiness and prep, and what comes next. If you have, you know, given what unfortunately would have been many folks' graduations, but tomorrow, we have resume and interview prep, Finance 101 to follow the week after, and an overall wellness check for, for folks. And so parents and students have both participated on these webinars, and we want to encourage more folks to participate. But again, my thanks to my team, who's done an outstanding job assembling all of the subject matter experts in each of these areas to help prepare our high school seniors, or high school students in general, or anyone interested, to participating. And so that's tomorrow from 4:00 to 5:00. It's available livestream on Facebook, as well as preregistered on Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Councilman Rue, for your words about the Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month. It's unfortunate that we cannot be in, in council chambers, have our normal celebrations to highlight the many contributions that members of the API community have brought to our country, and especially to our city. And you know, within my own very lifetime, growing up here in the city of Los Angeles, all 50 years, you know, I've seen the API involvement in our communities grow, whether they be PTAs, nonprofits, civic engagement groups, and above all, the API community has made numerous contributions to the arts and our economy, and the very fabric that makes up our incredible city. And I look forward to when this crisis is over, and we can take the time to celebrate all of the amazing contributions that all of our different cultures bring to our great city. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Coretz?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, as we all know, our seniors are our most vulnerable community members, especially during this coronavirus pandemic. Every year, Councilmembers Bonin and Rue and I work with the Department of Aging and organizations like the Stop Senior Scams Acting Program to gather in council chambers and declare May 15 as Senior Day Awareness Day, as, as part of our city's annual tradition of declaring May to be Older Americans Month. We traditionally recognize older Americans for their invaluable contributions to Los Angeles and to our nation. And to our nation, it's Older Americans Month, established by President John F. Kennedy in 1963, although he called it Senior Citizens Month then, and it was changed to Older Americans Month by Jimmy Carter in 1980. Although today we're online, I'd like to give a shout out to the amazing group Stop Senior Scams, who work hard to educate seniors and their families about scams that target seniors. And we're having an unusual amount of that during these COVID times. Under normal times, it's a $3 billion a year problem. I want to send out a shout out to Adrienne Almansky, who's been working for over 20 years on this issue, and to her group, the Stop Senior Scams Actors Program. I want to also say I'm personally proud of her as a constituent. I'm sorry if she can't join us today, and also Laura Trejo, who's doing yeoman's work as GM of the Department of Aging, working across the city during these COVID times to not only protect our seniors from COVID-19, but to make sure they're able to eat and are emotionally safe during these vulnerable times. However, our seniors are being targeted by a number of folks and predators that are, are trying to do lending scams, vaccine scams, various cure snake oil efforts, and imposters using fraudulent Medicare, Social Security, and economic stimulus offers to con our seniors out of their money and their personal identity information. Even in the most normal of times, even the most nimble sober mind who might be taken advantage of can be too proud to report when they've been defrauded. That's also why we celebrate May 15 as Senior Fraud Awareness Day. Now, I'd like to ask Mr. Bonin and then Mr. Rue to say a few words as well. Well, Mr. Coretz, I, I think you have quite literally said it all, so I will just say ditto, and thank you for doing this, and I endorse everything you just said. I, I was hoping you'd say something for a moment about how we picked the, the date of May 15 in 2013. All right, yeah, if, nice prompting and queuing up. May 15th, if you don't know, was the birthday of Bill Rosenthal, who was the originator of doing this celebration in council. So today would have been, or 15th would have been Bill's birthday. So thank you for the reminder on that, Mr. Coretz.
And, and I also want to thank Councilmember Coretz, and for thanking him for bringing this forward, and that's a nice reminder, Councilmember Bonin, and happy, happy birthday to Councilmember for, for bringing that up. And, but fraud has always been a big issue for our seniors, and, and seniors across the nation lose billions of dollars each year from these shameful scams. But especially now, we need to take care of our seniors, and we know that this can be harder than ever to spot these scams, when our seniors have less contact with our friends and our family. This is, this is why, one of the reasons why I started my senior outreach program with wellness checks to seniors across my district, and in partnership with Monami, I welcome anybody who wants to partner with us to contact me so we can help expand this program and reach out to even more seniors. Because while we all need to stay connected, even though we're apart, seniors need it even more. So I hope we can use this as a reminder, stay in touch with our older adult neighbors and our loved ones to help stop scams and stop social isolation. So have, thank you, Councilmember Coretz, for bringing Senior Fraud Awareness Month up.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. And Mr. Bonin, I didn't know Mr. Rosenthal shared a birthday with my father, May, May 15th. He would have been 88.
Wow.
So, thank you, guys. Anyone else want to make a quick announcement? Mr. Lee? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to adjourned motions. Mr. Harris Dawson, you have got two adjourned motions, sir?
Yes, I have two adjourned motions. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll ask all members to join me in recognizing a very tough week in American popular music. Today, as we celebrate the living birthday of Stevie Wonder, we recognize the loss of Betty Wright this weekend. Andre Harrell, who I'll ask that we adjourn in the memory of, at the age of 60 years old, passed away this weekend in the city of Los Angeles. Was born and raised in the Bronx and in New York City. Graduated high school in the 1970s and joined the burgeoning hip-hop movement in New York City. Put out a couple records, but found his real calling in the mid-1980s as a record executive. He worked at Def Jam and the world-famous Uptown Records. He brought us people like LL Cool J and Sean Puff Daddy Combs, Mary J. Blige, Heavy D, Joe DeC, Father MC, Al B. Shore, the notorious B.I.G., understood the cross-section of music and popular culture, and that the music business was as much about selling music as it was about selling ideas, fashion, and, and a way of life. He passed on May 7, May 7th of this year, at his home here in West Hollywood, complications. He had heart problems leading up to the time of his death. He's survived by his son Gianni, and he'll be greatly missed. And lastly, we acknowledge the passing of Richard Wayne Penniman, also known to the world as Little Richard, widely acknowledged as the king and originator of rock and roll, preceded Elvis, the Rolling Stones, and all the other stars that were recognized, inducted into the first class of the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. He grew up in rural Georgia, one of 12 children, in a very, very low-income household, learned music in high school through music lessons, and built a career as a frenetic pianist and showman in what was later to become rock and roll. We all know the song "Tutti Frutti," with its famous phrase, became number one in 1955 in both the United States and the United Kingdom. He's widely regarded as the first crossover artist, the first popular artist to chart on both black charts and white charts. Also, I think it should be noted, in this day and age, Little Richard was really the first non-gender conforming performer in the history of this country, and started a movement that we now see today in full strength. He lived many years here in Los Angeles, was a very active and supportive member of my father's church. We were growing up as little kids, we all waited outside church for the big black limo to roll up, and Richard to jump out in the sequins, and you know, he'd give us candy or music or whatever his surprise was that day. But did a really admirable thing, paid attention to everyone's educations, all the young people's education, making sure you had help if you needed to get from high school to college, and college, and, and on. And just a day-to-day sort of quiet and respectful community member, who made sure every young person knew the contribution that their culture was making to the development of the United States, and, and letting them know that all that the United States has is as much their inheritance as it is everyone else's. And so we celebrate the memory and ask all members to join me in adjourning in the memory of Little Richard.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, it's with a heavy heart that I share the passing of Ms. Karen Jean Cruz with all of you. Karen Jean Cruz was born on December 15, 1942, in Los Angeles, California, to Walter and Laura Kraxberger. She was baptized and confirmed in the faith at Christ Lutheran Church, Burbank. Karen graduated from Verdigo Hills High School in Taconga, California in 1960, and on November 20, 1965, she married the love of her life, Dennis Walker, Walter Cruz, at Christ Lutheran Church. They were married for more than 34 years and raised three sons before Dennis passed away on January 16, 2000. From this point forward, I will be referring to her as Mrs. Cruz, because that is how I knew her. I met her as a teenager, because her two, two of her sons were my best friends growing up, and are still that day. Mrs. Cruz and her family became members of First Lutheran Church, Burbank, in 1974. She was a faithful servant of the church, dedicating endless hours to the altar guild and ushering ministries. She also volunteered for many years as a Sunday School and Vacation Bible School teacher. Additionally, Mrs. Cruz was a member of the Parent Teacher League while her sons attended First Lutheran School. She put her love for crafting and her gift of hospitality to good use, creating banners, posters, and centerpieces for both church and school events. Mrs. Cruz was a beautician in her young adult life. When her sons came along, she was blessed to be able to make, to become a mom, to become, being a mom, her full-time job. While her sons were in grammar school, Mrs. Cruz volunteered in the hot lunch program at First Lutheran School. Later, she worked in the Food Services Department for the Burbank Unified School District for about 20 years before retiring in 2004. Being an avid fan of sports, of any sports her son played, Mrs. Cruz served as team mom for countless seasons of their Little League careers, and she even attended all of our adult league softball games. This dedication continued as she attended the various activities of her grandchildren as well. Mrs. Cruz also appreciated her time tending to and nurturing the plants and flowers that blossomed in her care. Mrs. Cruz's home was always open to me and her son's friends, and unfortunately, her refrigerator always paid the price of us being over at her house. And while she loved all of her activities, her greatest joy came from spending time with her family. She took her job of spoiling her grandchildren very seriously, showering them with gifts and love at every chance. and love at every chance she got. Another component of being a grandmother was that she held close to her heart, sharing her faith in Jesus with her grandchildren. Mrs. Cruz was a beautiful soul and one of the sweetest, caring people you could ever know. She is survived by her sons and daughter-in-law, Darren and wife Becca, Kevin, wife and wife Tanya, David and wife Laura, her grandchildren Allison, Caitlin, Kylie, Colin, and Chanel, and her entire extended family of brothers and sisters at First Lutheran Church, Burbank, and all of her son's TBC family. Thank you, Madam President. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Gakkorian?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Members, I'd like to ask that the City Council adjourn this meeting in memory of a real giant, a national leader in energy policy, in protection of the environment, in energy conservation, and a leader of those areas in this city as well, S. David Freeman, who passed away yesterday at the age of 94. David Freeman was a native of Tennessee. He had an engineering degree from Georgia Tech and a law degree from the University of Tennessee, and he was one of our country's earliest leaders in energy policy development. When President Johnson appointed him as an energy advisor in 1967, he was the first person in Washington to have a policy portfolio dealing with energy issues. He continued on under the Nixon administration and the Carter administration, and under President Nixon, he was one of the architects of the Environmental Protection Act and the development of the EPA. He continued on as an advisor to the Senate Commerce Committee on Energy Issues, and then led the Tennessee Valley Authority, the New York Power Authority, and our own LADWP, the three largest public power agencies in the country. In this city, in addition to serving as general manager of DWP from '97 to 2001, he was the president of the Harbor Commission, where he led the push for a cleaner port and helped to develop the most aggressive clean port policy in the country at the time. He also served as Mayor Vierigosa's deputy mayor for energy and the environment. He was irascible. He was indomitable. He was a guy who did not suffer fools lightly, and he spoke plainly about the issues that he knew so much about. I can remember when I was a member of the State Assembly and authoring the legislation that would move California to a 33% renewable portfolio standard. David Freeman as GM of DWP, and David Nahai as the president of the board came to lobby me on that bill, and David Nahai, in his typically graceful, elegant way, was trying to school me and my staff on some nuances of the bill, dealing with renewable energy credits or something, and how that bill would affect DWP. And David Freeman interrupted him in the middle of his presentation and actually started arguing with David Nahai in the middle of my office. So I had the two representatives of DWP arguing over this point in my office while they were trying to lobby me on the point, and it's a, it was a classic David Freeman moment that I will never forget. He's somebody who left a great legacy to this country in energy conservation, renewable energy, and in so many other areas of the environment, and he will be missed, but he will long be remembered for what he left behind. He's survived by his three children, nine grandchildren, and a great-grandson. May S. David Freeman rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Gakkorian. I'm going to ask that all members be included in this adjourned motion. I had no idea he passed away. I was just asking about him the other day, too. Thank you for that. Mr. Coretts?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. If I could add to that, that he was decades ahead of his time, and he fought for policies that are now looked at as essential to our efforts to deal with climate change, many years before most of us had even heard of climate change. And he also was active and on the cutting edge until the very end. He joined the Southern California Alliance for Clean Energy just a couple of weeks ago, and he published an article on energy storage that appeared in the Cal Matters web publication on the actual day that he died. So may he rest in peace and green power.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts.
And I'd also like, I would also like to add an additional adjournment as well, if I might.
Sure, go right ahead.
Colleagues, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Charlotte Afriat, the mother of Steve Afriat, who was a friend to many of us, a lobbyist, and the chief of staff to retired councilmembers of Yaroslavski. Charlotte passed away at the age of 95 after a full life. She was a loving mother and grandmother and a fierce advocate for her children and grandchildren. She was born and raised in Chicago by her parents, Morris and Sarah Ginsburg, and she was a musical prodigy, playing the piano at a recital at age five. She had a lifelong love of music, the arts, and literature, and was always sharing that with her children and grandchildren. Her calling was service, and after graduating with a degree in social work from Roosevelt College, she went to work as a social worker for Cook County. She did that alone as a young woman in many depressed neighborhoods in Chicago, with great empathy for her clients. It was during that time she met her husband, James Afriat. They met on a blind date, which she almost didn't go on because he arrived late, and she didn't like the show he was taking her to. But nonetheless, they did go out. He proposed to her on that night. She turned him down. He kept asking, and eventually, they were married, and that love affair lasted for over 40 years. They honeymooned driving across the United States, landed in Los Angeles, fell in love with the city, and shortly thereafter, moved to an apartment in Echo Park. Over time, she had three children, and often offended for herself since her husband, James, was a traveling salesman. As she got older, she rejoined the workforce, and true to her desire for service, she became an elementary school teacher and, years later, a principal. After she retired from education, she went to work full-time as senior coordinator for the West Valley Jewish Community Center and worked there well into her 80s, sometimes commenting on how old the seniors were there, although many were much younger than her. After the center closed, not to be idle, she started working one day a week in her son's office, enrolled in two classes at Pierce College, which she did well into her 90s. She was a Renaissance woman who loved to travel and saw much of the world, enjoyed movies, books, theater, opera, symphony, and evenings at the Hollywood Bowl with her grandchildren. She overcame adversity when she was faced with it, and even in the last three years of her life, which were difficult, she never complained and did her best to enjoy time with her family, friends, and loving caregivers. She was predeceased by her husband Jim and her brother Harmon. She is survived by her children Bonnie, Steve, and Sari, their spouses Bert, Curtis, and Debbie, and her grandchildren Mikey, Lisa, and Chance. Charlotte was a special person and will be missed by all who knew and loved her. May she rest in peace.
Any other adjourned motions, members?
Could I join on that motion, Councilmember Coretts? I mean, the adjournment?
Of course.
Yeah, I'd like to as well. Thank you.
Please add Mr. Rue and Mr. Brummenfield. Any other adjourned motions, members? See, none? Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.